So this is the Seymour Public Library District Board of Trustees monthly meeting for May 25th, 2021. And I think there are a couple of changes to the agenda, Larry.
Sorry, my computer froze on you. I think you're ready for.
Yep, we are. There's a couple of changes to the agenda. I guess I did not attach my May Director's Report, so we can take that out of the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other changes?
Well, it looked to me like when I pulled up the finance committee meeting minutes, they were the April meeting and not the May meeting.
Good catch. Did not see that.
So, so there you have it. We should probably pull those meetings minutes out of the consent agreement.
All right, so the May Director's Report and the finance are not part of the consent agenda. Okay. There is, there is something else too, and I, I just came across this, but not in enough time to do anything about it. But we do, we did have a special meeting. And there were minutes taken, and I believe the special meeting was about the awarding the contract. Is that correct?
Yes, but I thought that that was
It approved?
I thought that was approved, not.
Okay.
I, I'll look back and see.
Let's look back and make sure that that was properly approved. I don't remember. It may have been. I just don't remember. And that's, that's not infrequently does that happen? So, yeah, so, so that's, okay. Okay. So then are we, any other changes or thoughts? We need to change the agenda any further?
Under action items where it says approved mask wearing policy. I did get an update about half an hour ago, so I, I don't actually have a policy, but I want to explain.
We can talk about it. All right, we'll talk about it. Okay, good. All right, let's move on. Then the trustee education portion is has something to do with direct access.
Yes, and this is something that the Finger Lakes Library System has to do every five years. They, it's, it's a state thing. The state wants to know how the system is providing free and direct access to residents of the state and specifically the residents of the boundaries, within the boundaries of their service area. And so the last time this was updated, the director at the time was Kim Marachi, and she had added in, we had just started the one card, many libraries idea, which is that any, any library in the Finger Lakes Library System will honor another library's card. We won't make them get another new card. So that's been going well. And we really have no problems with it. There's not a lot of standardization across all 33 libraries. So I think that that's the next phase of the one card, many libraries. I talked to Sarah on Friday. I went over the current direct access plan. There's a part in that plan that it talks about if it's a hardship for a library, a member library, to provide services to people who aren't in their service area. So for example, for Seymour Library, we used to have a really stringent borrowing policy with a tiered level of service, so that people who weren't in our tax district couldn't get anything but books older than 24 months.
Right.
And we've, we've, some of it is state regulations and some of it is just being a good library citizen within our system. We relaxed a lot of those rules. There, the state says that like if more than 20% of the circulation is impacted based on reports provided by the Finger Lakes Library System, then we could do that. We could have that tiered level of borrowing. I don't think that Sarah plans on looking very closely at what we're doing because it's working out really well. We've, we've really tried again to be that good library citizen. But this direct access plan is the foundational document for the system, and she will be bringing any changes to all the boards of the member libraries for approval. So I wanted to give you a heads up about what the document was and why it's important and how it relates to us. The other thing I think that the plan talks about, it talks about unserved and underserved. And I think that the unserved is there, a town that does not have a library in it. So Troop in Cambridge County, I think, it's Troop and Niles and Aurelius. And then there's five counties within the Finger Lakes area. So I don't know what the, what the unserved areas are for there, but Finger Lakes is supposed to propose how they're going to serve the residents of those counties that are the towns that are unserved. So, you know, I, I told Sarah, obviously, we're, we're, we're happy to have whatever discussions. If there's a town that wants to join our tax district, we had a little bit of a conversation if a municipality that's not adjacent to our existing tax district could, could they join if they wanted to? And obvious, obviously, it's a bigger discussion. But that's the only other piece, I think, that would really relate to direct access in terms of what we do. Again, it's, this is a document for Finger Lakes to tell the state how they're carrying out the state's wishes. But as a member library, it impacts us. So that's really it. I wanted you to have some background information about it.
Lisa, Lisa, regarding the direct access plan, how prevalent usage is it with, in Auburn? Do you get a lot of people in using cards from other libraries or?
Yeah, yeah, we do. We have, um, you know, it's more common for people from Seneca Falls, um, Moravia, Union Springs. Sometimes from farther away, sometimes, you know, Ithaca people would come up and drive here to borrow something that they didn't want to wait for at their library. Back to this idea of a tiered level of service, Jill knows that we, we've had this discussion. You know, we, we let new books go out and DVDs and audiobooks. And right now, the only thing that people in the tax district have access to that other non-resident borrowers, they don't have access to are Canopy, Hoopla, Novelist Select, Creative Bug, a lot of the digital the databases. If we buy any kind of eBooks or e-audiobooks for Overdrive, that's automatically available to everybody in the Finger Lakes Library System. So we had Jackie dealt with somebody, I think on Monday, a woman had called and she was really upset that she couldn't have access to Canopy. She, I think she might be from Port Byron or somewhere within the Finger Lakes Boundary. And the state does not allow us to charge her for a card. Whereas if somebody who's outside of the Finger Lakes system, like in Skinny Atlas, you know, Anadaga County system is a separate system, we could charge them for a card. So it's really hard to explain. It's bad customer service. But we also have a duty to our taxpayers. So it's a complex issue with lots of, lots of sides to it. I don't know if Jill has anything else to add as we talk about it. No, Jill says no. So that's what I got for you, Russ.
That's okay. All right, just was curious.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. All right, then, move on. Moving on, the approval of consent agenda, which would include the minutes of April 27th and the board governance notes of 51321. Can I have a motion to accept?
Joe.
And a second?
I'll second.
Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And opposed and carried unanimously. Okay. All right, we've got some action items onto our favorite topic, financial statements. We'd like to lead discussion.
Go ahead, Larry. Finance, Finance Committee met last week and reviewed our P and L statement, balance sheet statements. Did not find any, any, anything alarming by any means. Things are going fairly normally. So I would make a motion that we approve the April financial statements.
I'm sorry, who?
Me, Linda.
Linda, okay. Any further discussion about the statement? Any, any questions for the committee members?
I just would like to point out that this time we included that liquidity statement. So that's, that's new. And it follows the format of what Elaine Buffington had, had shown at the audit. And the Finance Committee liked it and felt it was helpful. And the only change they made was Mike Trapani thought it would be really helpful to see as of, you know, that if it's April this year, then April last year, and how does it compare? So Melanie did update that. And I think that's what I sent to everybody.
Good.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting info.
I like, I like that information very much, too.
Yeah.
All right, any, any further discussion on the motion then? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have April 2021 claims.
Likewise, Finance Committee discussed these last week. We did not see any outstanding issues as far as large bills or anything that were not normal to the period. So I'll make the motion, we approve the April claims.
I will second.
Ellen, okay. Any discussion or questions about claims? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And again, carried unanimously. All right. We have a public information officer on the, on the list here.
Yes, we interviewed three candidates for this position. And I would like to provisionally appoint Maureen McEvers. Many of you know her. She was at the Tourism Office for a long time. She has a wealth of experience in communications and marketing. And we all think she would be a great asset to our team.
I'll make the motion to approve Maureen McEvers as the Public Information Officer.
I'll second it.
Any, any questions or discussions?
Lisa, when would she start?
She's gonna start June 7th.
Lisa, where does Jackie come in this, this Public Information Officer?
So Jackie, yep, Jackie will report to but they're really gonna be working together, but Maureen would be the department head.
The department head, okay.
And where physically, where would she be located in the building?
In the shared office here.
In the, next to you.
Right.
One more.
So Mary, so I have a lot of moving around. And I'm trying to move our, our check-in, we're not quarantined books anymore, but our check-in station is gonna move to behind the circ desk where Nancy Walsh works. Nancy's gonna move into this little study room that's currently has all of the bound Life magazines locked in it. So next week, we're moving all those books. Mary Lovell is moving from up here down to the Idea Lab where the check-in operations are moving out because Mary is, you know, embracing her role as technology librarian. And one of her main areas that she's working with is she's gonna be the manager of the Idea Lab. And as we are finally starting to open more, it makes a lot of sense that she's gonna be there with all, you know, doing classes and workshops and programs with that technology. So we have a lot of moving around that has to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Very good. Wow, wow. Okay. Questions? Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
I don't think we had a second. I will, did we? Okay, all right. Okay, then I approve.
And those not in favor? Opposed? Saying unanimously, that's a good thing. Okay, so then the last is not a policy, as you stated, Lisa, but you wanted to run through what, what's going on with us and the state and what we're doing here.
Right. So on Friday afternoon, there's a lawyer named Cole Adams, who is out of Western New York, and she does a lot of advising to libraries and library systems. And she did a webinar on the recent changes in mandates and, you know, could we ask people for proof of vaccination? How do you deal with the public? How do you deal with employees? What happens with Americans with Disabilities Act? How does everything play in together? And prior to that workshop, I, Sarah had said that there would be a draft mask wearing policy provided. But it, that's not what Cole provided. She really referenced the New York State Business reopen safety plan. If you remember, when we reopened back in July, we had to do this like six-page reopening plan based on whatever the New York Forward regulations were, and we've been updating it as regulations changed. And right now, our, our current wording, it, the, under the part, the question is how will you manage engagement with customers and visitors on these requirements? And the requirements are about following social distancing and any other guidelines the state is requiring. And our wording currently is all patrons must wear masks upon entry. And the mask must remain in place at all times during their visit in all areas. And the masks must cover mouth and nose, and that we will, we will provide masks to patrons and visitors if they do not have one. So my question to you is, I think that rather than a mask wearing policy, we just have to update this plan. And right now, I sent you the language that we're currently using, right, that we're requesting that people wear masks, not requiring it. Where, I'm never gonna like check people's vaccination status. It's just, that's just not something that we're gonna do here. I think in a super small business or a super small office, you probably could, but that's, that's just not gonna happen here. So I know that Jill does have concerns because we do serve children and that that's what we said in our wording right now that took place from last Wednesday. That, you know, we, we do have kids, anybody under 12 can't be vaccinated. So we're asking, asking not requiring people to wear masks. And I think it's been going okay. I haven't heard, yeah, Jill's nodding.
Yeah, for the most part, we've been, it's been pretty good. Any, you know, usually people ask when they come in if they don't have it on. And we say, you know, we are asking that you wear one. And for the most part, everyone has. We've had one man last week said no. And he was just picking up a hold, so we didn't really argue the fact. We let him get his hold, go and check it out, and he laughed. But other than that, everyone has been, has been really good with us.
So I think what I would like to do is I'd like to update the wording on our safety plan as we're looking ahead to next week where we're gonna be open our full 56 hours a week and the regulations and requirements about mask wearing have changed. I would like to go with this new wording where we're requesting people to wear masks.
So you're using the word requesting and not must?
Right, not requiring.
Not requiring.
Not requiring, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a, it's a fine line we walk. I don't know that there's any real easy way to do it. I, I think the, the notion of requesting. And if people ask why, then you have a perfectly logical reason why. Because, you know, kids under 12 are not fully vax, are not vaccinated at all. And we're trying to protect our entire community. So now, you know, somebody says, well, I've been vaccinated and blah, blah, blah. Okay. I suppose, you know, you're not gonna stand there and argue or kick somebody out.
Right. Right. And we don't, we don't really have a leg to stand on.
No, you really don't. It's, it's really difficult. You know, we were in Indiana last week and yeah, I mean, they weren't wearing masks to begin with. Now, you know, not very, very, very little if any mask wearing going on now.
Yeah.
So, and you know, yeah, okay, we're fully vaccinated, but our, you know, six-year-old grandchildren aren't. So, you know.
Right.
Yeah. Anyway, yeah, I think you gotta go with, with it. And you don't really want to be confrontational. You hopefully appeal to people's sense of what's right and what's wrong.
Right, right. I was wondering, Jill, have you had parents ask you? Does it, is it safe to bring my kids into the library?
We haven't. We haven't had anybody ask about that. The parents that come in, you know, that come with kids, that everyone has a mask on. And when the one man was here that didn't have one on, we didn't have a family in at that time.
Right.
But of course, that could have been a different, they could have went a different way if there had been a family here. I mean, they would have been upset, so.
But as, as school lets out, you have, I don't know what you're doing about programs, but more things going on. So, but maybe the policy will be different by then.
But right now, I'm planning for June, I'm planning outdoor programs. And in the wording, we are at, we are saying we will be social distanced, and we're asking that everyone wears a mask for those because it is, it is kids. I think adult programs maybe are doing something a little different. But for my programs in June, you know, as far as everything we know right now, I'll be asking that everyone wears a mask.
Even though, even though they're outdoors?
Even though they're outside, yeah. And then if they're social distant and the fam, you know, if the parent is comfortable at that point and decides, I'm certainly not gonna argue with anyone or make a child leave if they don't keep their mask. But, so that's the wording we're going with, they're promoting of the events.
Okay, good.
And, and school kids are doing that anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're probably used to it, right?
My son is very used to it. He went back to school in April, and he's so used to it, he wears it all the time. Or in the car, and I'm like, you can take it off. And he's like, oh, I forgot it was on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we witnessed that too. But I think that that's a good, a leg to stand on, so to speak. Is that, you know, the school policies are still, you know, requiring masks even though you're outdoors. And it's just, you know, you're being, you're being cautious and concerned that, you know, we keep everything under control. So, okay.
So I, I would, I'm requesting approv- approval of changing that wording in our New York State Safety Reopening Plan that I guess it's the revisions as of June 1st.
I'll make the motion to do that, make the word changes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thanks.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All in favor then?
Aye.
And opposed and carried unanimously. Okay. Nancy, I guess you're, you're up. You're gonna give us a sort of update on the Library Foundation?
Yeah, yeah. And you know what? I apologize for wearing a print that really you're not supposed to do that, I guess, right? So we did have our annual, very late annual meeting last week at CCC, which was nice. And we did it in person. For those who were able to, to come and everyone, everyone was present in one way or another. So it was really great. It was really great to be able to, to do it that way. And I think it made for a really good meeting. So we elected officers, be the same officers that we've had. I guess we're just suckers for that. I, I, I will continue to represent the foundation on this board, which I'm, I'm happy to, to do. And we are not, at this point, adding any new foundation members. We just feel like we have so much going on right now that it's best just to keep our group as it is, but everyone is willing to continue to, to re-up for another year for those whose terms ran out. So so that was, that was really good. So the one item that we did approve that affects all of you or affects the district is that we, we know that we have taken for granted many years now, the, the work that Lisa and that the bookkeeper, and in this case, it's Melanie, that those two people do on behalf of the foundation. We don't have our own executive director, as you know, we're all volunteers. So they do put in a lot of time, and we wanted to recognize that. So I asked Lisa to give us some idea of time that she spends on foundation business, and Melanie did the same. And we voted to reimburse the library district up to $5,000 a year for this current year, anyway, for the work that both of them do. So, so.
Wow.
Well, as I say, it's, it's, I think it's long overdue.
Wow.
But because they do put in time and do great work for us, and Lisa, appreciate it. Wish Melanie was here, but anyway, so I, I actually dropped a check off. We'll do probably two checks. So I gave Lisa a check this morning for half of it. And I think doing it this way gets us out of the issues of taxes and what have you. So I hope that's okay with everyone.
Oh, absolutely.
We are meeting tomorrow in person at, at the college, also with the attorneys that we have hired from Syracuse, Bob Smith and Zachary Benjamin from Costello, Cooney and Fieron to talk about the two big issues that have been hanging over our heads now for a while. One being the transfer of the property from the foundation to the district, and the other being the, the, the roof repair. And obviously, those two items are intertwined. So we're meeting with them. I will be updating everyone on what comes of that meeting. But at this point, I can't say.
Okay.
But maybe, maybe we can at least say we're making, finally making some progress here. So, yeah, I know, I know. And I know, you know, you want to get this darn roof done, so hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to move forward on that, Larry.
Good. Thank you.
So that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? Anybody have?
Good job.
Okay.
No, I think it's terrific that, that, you know, you're No, I, I think it's terrific that uh, that, that, you know, you're recognizing the effort that's.
Oh, I think it's great.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I guess it's the.
So that's good.
The least we could do, so.
That's, I, that's wonderful. I really do. I do, so, very good. Okay. All right, so some discussion items. We have a general accounting policy for reading. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read through this. Uh. Lisa, do you have any thoughts or amendments about this?
Of the finance, finance review.
Oh.
The finance committee reviewed it and um, I think it's just mostly was just updating to take the wording um. Referring to Assistant Director and making sure it had the right um. Titles for who did what, um, because we now have a paid library treasurer and Joe's. Position as Finance Officer is called Finance Officer. So it was just, it was mostly just updating. I don't think there were. Any major changes.
Anybody else like to comment on it? Okay.
No, look good. Yeah, we've got several policies. The finance committee's working on them. We're trying to knock one off every month if it happens, so, to catch up, so.
Okay. So is there action that needs to be taken by this board uh, next time we meet? Or is it um? Cause there's a, a date, six something, twenty twenty-one. By Seymour Library District Board of Trustees. So does that mean we?
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to.
We're gonna bring this up at our next meeting to approve the changes in policy. Okay. Now, do we have uh, is there a document that's sort of goes side by side or um? Or a um, you know, how in Word you can track editing?
Oh, a redline version. I could.
Yeah.
I could see if I could do that for you. I did it once and I don't know what I did with it, but I will look for it.
Yeah, if you, if you're ever working in um, in Word.
Yeah.
You can always turn on track changes.
Yep.
And then it'll, it'll keep all of those and it'll show you what's, what's changed. I think that would be helpful. I mean, just reading it, it looks fine, but I don't know. What's been changed. And certainly relying on, you know, you guys that have, that have reviewed this. Um, to say, yeah, it's really just getting things up to date. So it'd be good just if you could show that, it could also become part of our record.
Yeah.
Right, and, and then that would, that would give us an opportunity then to say, oh, yeah, okay, that's easy peasy, let's move on. Okay. Very good. Thank you for looking at policies that uh, are supposed to be reviewed uh.
Yeah.
Often, right?
This one's four years old, which that's not bad.
Not bad.
That really isn't, so.
No, 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 very good. Okay, uh, Jenny's not here, but um, there was a, a governance committee meeting that took place and notes. That we have in front of us. Uh, would anybody else care to make uh, a comment about it?
Russ, I. Russ, I have um, I have the. Current strategic plan. If I bring it up on my screen, do you wanna talk about it or just introduce it?
Sure.
All right, let's see if I can. Here, if I say, share, here, okay. So. This is what Russ and Jackie and Jenny and I distilled. At this point, um, and Russ could probably talk a lot more about it.
Okay, um. We're trying to keep it. Simple and succinct. For everybody involved because we don't want a real wordy statement. I don't think we need that. We need to just. Put it out there and let people know and they, they can. See it right up front what it is without having a lot of verbiage here to confuse people, saying, you know, our, our Seymour Library's mission. To connect our community, to expand opportunities, to inspire curiosity. Uh, we feel that that's. That's at the core of what we, we need to do. Uh, and we're doing that already in a lot of ways. And um. And it's, it's, it makes sense where we think with what we're doing. Um, the vision. It's our mission to serve as the company's hub of learning and discovery by providing dynamic resources and experiences. When you look and see what we're doing. On a consistent basis with all the programs we have and, you know, the, the new children's room and all the programs we provide for the kids, all the summer activities. Uh, that's. That's gonna bring the people in, we hope, to keep them uh, coming in and having decent experiences and tell everybody about it, so we can get more people coming into the library. Um, our values that we're welcoming, professional, resourceful, vibrant and empowering. Um, everybody's welcome in our library. We know that. Our people, our staff is just. Bar none, they know what they're doing. They're very helpful with people. Um, you know, people who contact Lisa uh, for all kinds of questions about everything. They, they know that this is a place they can come and, and get answers from, whether it's about library stuff or whether it's uh, community issues. That's what we wanna be. We wanna be, as again, the company's hub of learning and discovery. And um. And the things that, some of the uh, values that we discussed of being curious, inclusive, vibrant, imaginative, collaborative. Uh, those are all things that. Kind of, I think um. Tells you what a library should be. A library is just not a place to get a book. Libraries where, you know, you come in and you look, you see around you, you see all the different. Things you can do in a library. And we includes, it's inclusive to all peoples, no matter, we, some people aren't there for a library card or for a book. They wanna look at uh. How to, how to make a cake, how to, how to do this, how to do that. They can find it there. And you've got people here, staff who are vibrant, who like to do that kind of stuff and are more than willing to do it for people. And so we're laying this all out and hopefully people will see this and know that this is what we're standing for.
Hmm.
So um, this is what, what we currently have and that's where. Our little group started talking about with this current strategic plan and I think Jackie has sent this out to everybody this afternoon. We started here and then. Um, we started refining and saying, what changed? Is this still valid? Do, you know, does this current plan here still hold up? So there's a little bit of tweaking that we came up with. And that's what this edited version, the second page is.
Hmm.
And then the next phase of our process is to come together with Melina um, to just. Really finalize this with the board and the staff and then I, I think we also, we also need to hold. A little bit of public, um. I don't know, focus groups or just an opportunity for people to talk about it. Um, because it really should be community-based and we, we need to take into account what our community says. Um, but, but this was our starting point. So you all have this. It went out this afternoon from Jackie. And I think she sent it out to all the staff as well. And then the next step is just for me to schedule time. With Melina. I'm looking at. Uh, like a Thursday or Friday afternoon. And we'd like to try and do it in person, socially distanced. Um, it looks like we can use the Keighley Museum's Carriage House.
Oh.
And that would be enough, it's big enough that we would be able to space. Um, and have a, have conversations um, and have Melina help walk us through this. Um, I think that's it. So if you could look at the current. And then look at where, you know, the changes that the small group made. Because we had a lot of discussion about the words, you know, what's the difference between expand and engage? And does that really talk about where we are today and where we hope to be? Is this our future? Um, did I, you do, do you think I hit everything, Russ?
Yeah, I think you covered it. I, yeah.
Do, uh, I just, I do have one question because I'm not finding it.
It didn't come to everybody?
I don't think I got it.
No, I didn't get it either. I'm, I'm seeing it now, um.
Yeah.
Oh, there it, oh, Jackie sent it?
Yeah, it would have been Jackie.
Yeah.
Um, La- Lisa? Lisa?
Yep.
In the first, the very first sentence, you have a grammatical error.
Okay.
It's.
It's, okay.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I will talk to Jackie. I think Jackie has this document on her drive, so I will fix it with her.
Okay.
Thanks. No, no problem.
When did she send that out, you know?
I thought she sent it out this afternoon. She just walked in and handed me the printout, so.
Oh.
Um.
I don't, I don't see it, but I'll.
Okay, well, then I'll make sure it goes out after our meeting and you'll have it.
Does this, does this date back to when we made the new emblem for the library that says two thousand and thirteen on there? Is that when we did all that?
That's the logo.
Yeah, okay. That was the time we did the strategic.
We, yeah, remember, we met with the Rochester Act Council and we went through that survey.
Yep, okay. I was just trying to remember. I thought so.
Yep.
Great.
So, um. I will, I will find out um, from Melina about dates that she's available and then I will send something to all of you to see. If we could do a two-hour. Get together with Melina, like I said, on a Thursday or Friday afternoon.
Okay, Thursday is preferable.
Yeah.
Um, okay, very good. Well, thank you for the work that you folks are putting in. Um, speaking of meetings, um, you're talking about another. A budget meeting taking place on June second at four thirty.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and, and as the, I mean, the finance committee primarily is gonna be doing it, but I would like to invite. Anyone on the board who has an opportunity to uh. To join us, to please join us. So we're, we're. Struggling is not the right word we should use, but we are working on. Eventually getting to a budget in the next few years that is totally balanced. Uh, we've had the. Great help that the foundation was able to donate money to the library, but. We've changed that around a little bit and so now we, uh, the library itself. Uh, has to become a little more self-sufficient, so any ideas uh, we can get from the board would be welcome and uh. Join us on that meeting on the second.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other um, additions or we, we cover everything we need to?
I think we have.
Okay. Our next board meeting is scheduled for June twenty-second at four P M. And um, do we know whether that's gonna be a Zoom or uh, in person? I guess we'll stick with Zoom for now. Is that the idea?
We'll stick with Zoom for now unless I hear differently.
Okay.
Usually it's at the beginning of the month, so I would think next week I'll. Find out if the executive order has been extended. That would allow us to meet by Zoom.
Okay. Yeah, I would think that if we're all vaccinated, then it would be.
Yep.
Permissible, but.
Yeah, you would think, you would think so.
Yeah, all right. Well, everything, great, have a nice rest of the day and um.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.